Call a regular city council meeting of July 16th, 2018 to order. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda? Approved the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here in place, all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lildgren to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for the special work session of July 2nd, 2018, and the regular meeting of July 2nd, 2018. What is the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills, checks number 98839 through 98942 totaling $1,095,787.35. What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Got an award. Community partnership grant, thermal camera, fire department, accept. What's the wish of the council?
Move to accept.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Hanson for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, animal control report, June 2018, receive. Application for exempt permit, Minnesota Rodeo Association, raffle, Morrison County Fairgrounds, approve. Fire report, June 2018, receive. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, July 2018, receive. Parade permit, special event application, Minnesota Army National Guard, run August 18th, 2018, approve. Police report, May 2018, receive. Show license, First United Church, Haiti Partnership, Maple Island Park, approve. Waste water report, June 2018, receive. Water report, June 2018, receive. What's the wish of the council on the consent?
Make a motion to receive and approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Gushak to approve the consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings. Got a public hearing. Resolution 2018-35, vacate alley, Kuklux addition number one, consider. 7:37. Open to public hearing. Greg?
So, the request this evening is to vacate the alley in Kuklux addition. To give you a sense of where this is at, this is north of where Wabash is currently at, just west of the county's garage. There's a paper alley over there that separates roughly six lots, front and back, so there's six on the front, six on the back roughly. And the petition is signed by the majority of the proprietors, with the exception of the city of Little Falls, we own one lot, so we did not sign it. But the other folks signed it. They own both front and back of that particular lot. And so, this evening, we are considering to vacate that particular portion of the alley.
Any questions?
Did you say the same people that own the, on one side of the alley, own the same inline behind the alley?
Correct. For the most part, there's one that owns the lot up and around, but they have road frontage to the street, so it's not as if they're landlocked.
Wouldn't landlock anybody in the back?
We would not be creating a landlocked situation, no.
I think it's even, I mean, there's nothing there when you say paper alley. Literally, you can't tell there's supposed to be one.
Correct.
It looks like just big yards.
It's not an improved alley, correct.
And the reason for this, I think, was mentioned because they want to build, the people on the first two alleys, I mean, two lots with alley in between, want to put a structure up there, and that would, they could put it right across the whole thing.
Correct, yes.
If there's two lots, do they have to combine them and make them into one? Or is it already, if they're going to build a structure that's crossing over the property line?
If it's crossing over the property line, they would be required to combine the two lots, yes.
Actually, one of the parcels in question actually already is a single lot with the alley splitting into the county's parcel. It is the same parcel number on east and west.
Yeah, it is.
And if it's not, would they have to, if it doesn't divide, if the building doesn't divide the two lots, would they still have to meet setbacks from where the alley would be?
So, if the alley's not vacated, then they would still have to meet setbacks where the alley would be on paper, because it's still dedicated as a public alley currently. If it was combined, or that the alley was vacated and they chose to leave it as two separate lots, they would still need to meet those setbacks requirements. If they combined it into one, you know, that lot line essentially goes away, and so they would be able to build across that line at that point.
Any other questions? Public hearing, anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Third and final call, any from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, 7:41. We'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council? Motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Hanson for approval of resolution 2018-35. Discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes. Lettings, ditch cleaning, West Side Industrial Park?
This portion is basically west of where we were just talking about. This is in our west industrial park. That was plotted back in, I think it was 1976? Yeah, 1976. The ditches haven't been cleaned for quite some time, and so it's starting to back up water in those ditches and not flow as freely as we'd like. And so, we are proposing to clean the ditch in between 13th and 9th Street, and then depending on if funds allow, we'd like to do the 4th Street and 9th Avenue as well. We did try to obtain three quotes for it. We received two of them, one from Kim and Dirt Diggers and one from Eagle Construction. The difference in the two is the, basically, the equipment that they're proposing to use. Right now, the ditch, you've got an easement that you, that we've got for the ditch, and it comes down at the slope on either side. And so, Kim and Dirt Diggers is planning on using, basically, a dozer and loader to push the material to the one side and use the backhoe to remove it. Eagle Construction is using, proposing to use just the backhoe and then truck the material away. The recommendation tonight is to award that to Kim and Dirt Diggers at the hourly rates that we have, not to exceed $20,000. We did budget for this in the Stormwater Improvement Fund to clean that stretch.
So, why, when we, an RFP we put out on this, I would guess, right?
We solicited quotes from those, the three local contractors.
So, did we ask for quotes on all the pieces of equipment, or just, do we ask for a job?
We asked what it would cost at an hourly rate to clean the ditch. And then the contractor, it's up to them to decide how they would best use to clean that ditch. It gets back to directing the contractor on how to do it versus performance-based. You know, we want to clean ditch and what it would cost to get there.
So, why wouldn't we just go out for ditch cleaning? Why an hourly? This drives me absolutely nuts. Except one guy can do it in two hours, the next guy could be there for 20 hours.
We can. We definitely can do it that route.
Go by linear foot, go by a job, or whatever, but this hourly stuff drives me nuts.
It's a challenge to estimate how much it's going to take to get through there, and so it's, you're, you get at times where folks are reluctant to give you a price on it, simply because, you know, with a slope, you don't know how sloppy that slope is going to be, whether you're going to slide down to the bottom and you're going to sit there for, you know, two hours trying to get back up to the top. Whereas on an hourly basis, they're, you know, at least covered. They're going to try to cover their butt, and so they're going to always pat it and make sure that it's there. We can do it either way. Doesn't matter to me.
We could get 100 feet of the ditch cleaned for $20,000, and that's what we get. And where do we start?
Well, I mean, potentially, but I don't see that occurring when you...
It don't until they get everything buried in the mud, and there they sit, and they waste two days trying to get their equipment back out. I don't know. I just have a hard time if that's, we should have put out an RFP then for what exactly we wanted, not just to let them willy-nilly, whatever. And Knife River didn't want nothing because they're too busy for the year?
They're full for the year is what they've indicated, yes.
Greg, I tend to agree with Jeremy, only because I think it would be cleaner, because it's kind of hard to compare these. And in your defense, I know it isn't. It just will make it look cleaner if we have those total project bids, in my mind, so you're not, you know, people aren't pointing fingers, and we know that's not the case here. But I just, I think for your good.
Sure.
I would rather see it that way.
Okay.
That's just us.
Yeah.
Everybody else has a good opinion.
I have the same opinion.
It's going to be up for a vote, so.
I agree.
I don't like these time and material bids, because I've seen in the past where they can get real excessive, you know, way above what you anticipated. At least this way, you have a ballpark figure, and maybe there could be a stipulation put in there if they do end up burying something where it takes a little time to get it out.
That's their responsibility.
Yeah, that's a cost of doing business.
Well, there's always that 10% overrun you can apply there, I suppose, like any construction project.
Well, that drives me crazy, too. You know, we found more granite. Well, sorry. Like...
I guess I just worked on remodeling houses before, and sometimes you got to take off the sheet rock to find out what's underneath, and you might end up with a whole different project than you anticipated.
This is dirt.
Yeah, it's dirt, but it's mud.
Dirt, it's settled back in and growed up with grass.
I agree with the mayor that for your protection, it should be done.
Fair enough.
What is the wish of the council? Positive motion, please.
I move to award.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion fails. Old business, no parking requests, Independent School District, 42, deny?
In your packet, on page 41 of the packet, or in the electronic version, 31 of the paper version, we have the request from the school in terms of the no parking request. It's on the south side of the baseball soccer complex, on the Smith Avenue section of it. We are recommending denying the request, simply because after witnessing the, I guess, the complex in action, there are quite a few folks that park down in that stretch, even though the parking lot does have a couple of spots, but not many. I would say it's about 90% full in most of the cases, and you still have folks parking on that south end. My concern would be if we sign that portion of it as no parking, they would just go outside of that, which then would be private property, and probably aggravate the neighbors more than what there's currently is. So, tonight, we are recommending denial of that request.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Lildgren to deny. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Little discussion, maybe. I was going to mention something pertaining to this. Is there a possibility somehow of getting more parking out there? You know, back when we're having discussions about putting baseball parks out there, years back, and then we had the ark come in, one of the reasons why our previous city engineer didn't want to have the parks on the school ground is he said there would never be enough parking out there. He said he could figure out no way you could put up that kind of a complex in that school property area and still have enough parking. And I've been hearing a lot of, they're not complaining, they're really happy the baseball parks are, diamonds are there, but there are a lot of people that are walking a long distance to get there, and we don't want to make it further yet. That's why I'm in favor of not allowing Smith to be vacated or no parking allowed. But maybe it's something we can look into to see if there is a possibility of establishing some parking out there.
But parking back on Pine to take care of part of it.
Vacate Pine.
Through what?
Anyway, that's all I had to say.
Public parking lots, up and down every side. Resolution 2018-31, approve plans and specs and call for bids, public improvement 378A.
We've got the plans and specs ready for...
Wait, whoops. They didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
We voted.
Yeah, we voted, and then we had discussion after, so it's not, nobody's changed. Okay, thank you.
Good to go.
Go ahead.
Okay. We've got the plans and specs ready for 378A. This is the 5th Avenue southeast portion. It's roughly a 400-foot stretch of sewer and water that we're looking at extending. So, tonight, we're asking the council for approval to authorize advertisement for bids on the project, so we can move that one forward.
What's the wish of the council on resolution 2018-31?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve resolution 2018-31. Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll, please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
New business, economic development authority recommendation regarding property in Chief Holm in the day addition, consider. John?
We were approached by the, by Centerpoint Energy Gas Utility Company that serves Little Falls a few months ago about the potential of building a site here that would be as, kind of a support site for them, a home base, if you will, for a lot of their road staff. With that, they would be, in the previous discussions, they would have about 30 employees that would be centered out of that site, spending a majority or significant portions of their time there. Think the Minnesota Power, you know, site in terms of staging equipment, or, you know, somebody coming there for the things that they need and then moving out onto the, out into their jobs, even if they're not within the city limits, they'd be serving a much larger territory. They were very interested in property in the Chief Holm in the addition, and we did receive a letter of intent from them. The EDA met earlier today to discuss that letter of intent. There were a couple modifications that we requested that they, or conciliations that they make on that, and they agreed. So, the letter of intent that they originally had, and then the notes on the conciliations are included in that shared folder for your attention. We are, we did have them concede to not, that we would not pay a seller's commission on the price, or on the property, and there would be the potential for our policy on job creation, buying down the purchase price of that. They're not asking for any other tiff district or development of that property for the project, so. Is there any other comments? I know I fortunately wasn't able to be in attendance at the meeting today, but Greg and Brad, you were...
We had to do that additional survey. I don't remember.
Yeah, an ALTA survey, of which we would be the owners for, so if this, if this deal were to fall through, we would have that information, and it would, it would serve us well and serving, selling that property to future buyers.
I would just add, once again, it's a good deal for the city if this does go through, getting them on the tax rolls.
Having them located out of here.
Yeah, and like we had discussed at the meeting today, the more buildings you get out there, the more popular it is for other people to build out there. So, I think it's another step forward for the community.
Activities spur activity. Any other? What's the wish of the council?
Sorry.
Recommendation I would make in favor of passing this.
The EDA's recommendation.
Yeah.
Accept EDA recommendation?
Yeah.
So, the water and sewer doesn't go to the building, yeah, okay.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Gushak to accept EDA's recommendation. Any other discussion?
John, when you said they'd be spending most of their time there, what does that mean? They wouldn't be living?
I mean, they would, no, no, they would, they would have, for when they report to their job, they would go to the site, pick up their equipment, then they would be on the road. There would be other, there'd be servicing equipment on the site, so, I mean, there would be employees that would be based out of there. It isn't going to be an office building where somebody's going to be on-site all of the time, but this will be their home base of cooperation for this territory.
And they said they would be doing some training out of there, too.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, part of the understanding was that now it's in Malacca, and these people have to run out to Malacca, a lot of the repairmen on this way.
I think Malacca, Alec, they have one, two, I believe.
So, we're a nice central location to add a site, another site, because of the territory that they're serving here. Like it said, like Minnesota Power has their site here, not a lot of their staff is here working all of their time in Little Falls. They have to, other communities that they go and work for, work in, but then they do come back here with their equipment or the other, you know, the other things that they need.
And we went with, and you may have mentioned this, full-time equivalent, rather than, for sure, just full-time.
Yeah, it is, it is eight. They're proposing eight FTE, full-time equipment positions, that would, in total, our proposal to them was calculating your estimated work hours that you would have generated out of this facility onsite during a total year, and that's what you could, you know, to request for in the, in the purchase price, percentage, I guess, cost reduction. So, each, the policy that we've created in the economic development is that for every FTE that's created, 10% of the purchase price is reduced for these, for these lots.
Created and retained.
Yeah, created and retained.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Planning Commission recommendation, rezone and annex 14791 Clover Glen Lane. Accept, approve?
The Planning Commission held a public hearing in regards to the particular annexation. They are proposing that the rezone, that parcel as it comes into the city as an R1, and that is the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Alderman Hercock for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018-36, orderly annexation agreement, Little Falls Township, Quinn Wallvoogal property, approve?
This is the same parcel, so this is the agreement, if you will, in terms of the orderly annexation with Little Falls Township. We are recommending approval on this as well tonight.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Canofla to approve resolution 2018-36. Any discussion?
Is there a reason we don't have more of this to have cleaner city lines over there?
The orderly annexation is on a case-by-case basis, so the property owner approached us in this particular case, their septic system was failing, and so they approached us to get city sewer to the property.
Didn't happen that way in Bell Prairie.
Don't disagree.
Because isn't it kind of...
It does some of that, yes.
All over in that area?
Yes, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-37, appoint election judges. Adopt. What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt 2018-37.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson to appoint election judges. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, and the bottom line there, it says, "And the assistant chairperson receiving an additional $14 per hour." I think we should strike "additional" because it sounds like they're getting the $12 plus another 14.
Sorry, the alarm is telling me to take my pill.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Is that an additional going to be stricken from there? Yes?
I have it as, the people didn't say that they weren't making the motion, I'm assuming.
Okay, in that case, yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 2018-38, call for public hearing, refinance bonds, St. Francis Health Services of Morris. Adopt.
This is, we were approached by St. Francis Health Services of Morris. They are the financier for, or I guess, counsel for owners for the Little Fall Care Center. This would be to, so that we could facilitate their bonding for their project. This is similar to other projects that we've done in the past, however, this one does go against our total bonding limit of $10 million for the year, so the amount that we are bonding for would be reduced by that. We have no obligation to covering their bonds. This is so that they can file for a tax-exempt bond, bonding when they go to market.
What is the dollar amount on that one?
I don't see.
I don't either. Was, they were proposing eight.
Not 14 million. Said not maximum aggregate amount not to exceed 14 million.
Is that, I'm sorry, that's...
Shoots our tan down.
I'm sorry, I may have confused this with another...
This shouldn't have nothing to do with our bonding limit, does it? Aren't we just a host farm?
Their total, their total project is 14. They are also using Randall and, City of Randall and City of Royalton to facilitate the obligations. But it doesn't have listed, we, in our discussions, we did have that they wouldn't exceed 7.5 million of our capacity. I'm surprised that we didn't, it isn't specified in this resolution. Excuse me, I'm sorry, it isn't, I'm surprised that isn't specified in this resolution.
I think we better hold on to our pants. Do we get it in there then, or not?
Yeah, it probably should be.
It was, I mean, we did have our bond counsel, Briggs and Morgan, review this resolution,
Well, we got a bond for street projects this fall, right?
Yes.
And if we're gonna whack our limit, to refinance somebody else's, I think we better...
You know, that was, that was a lot of the consideration when we were in this discussion, and, and that we were, you know, we knew that we were gonna have projects this fall and this, and that was the estimate that we were going to, to be taking, so.
And we can't add anything to change the resolution not to exceed 7.5 million at the meeting, so we can get it done? I'm, I don't know, I'm at...
It's my understanding, Mary Apple from Briggs and Morgan approved it. This is, this resolution is just to call for the public hearing, and we are just the host.
Okay, so we're not actually, we're just gonna have a public hearing on it?
This is just to call the public hearing for them to come in and review their, what they propose to do. So I'm assuming the city council can do anything they choose to at, at following the public hearing.
Ma'am. What's the wish of the council?
To contain.
Anybody?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilmember Gushak, to call for public hearing on refinancing project for St. Francis Health Services of Morris. Discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll?
Hamfler?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Knopfla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Curious.
Just so you know, that public hearing is August 20th.
Any reports?
Yes. First, I want to give an invitation to the council and the mayor to attend August 2nd at 5 o'clock, Lindberg Park Headquarters, ribbon cutting of the trail, the Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail, which is gonna start in Little Falls here, and we've invited a lot of dignitaries, and we want as many people who support this project to show up, so you have an invitation to attend. I'll give a little report on it. I, it's moving along quicker than what I anticipated lately. Camp Ripley, like I said before, is, we have an MOU, and it's been signed by Morrison County, Cass County, Crowing County, a lot of mayors and people, and Camp Ripley. But something better happened, the DNR and Camp Ripley are working on a cooperative agreement, which is actually legal binding for that land on the west side of Camp Ripley to be used for a trail purpose, or in camps intent to try to help this trail along on the west and north end. And there's a lot of other groups, there's a couple of power companies and Boise Cascade willing to work with some land on the north end. Pilliger has bought property to run this trail through their town and over the river. Randall's working on it. All of a sudden, it's like a fire started underneath everyone. Mendat, the corridor between Brainerd and Little Falls, they're checking into running the trail on that and some county land through there.
Question for you, Frank, why are they working on the east side and the west side? The trail is gonna go on both sides?
That's the way the trail was proposed by the state of Minnesota.
Or on one side and bike on the other one?
No, it's both, they wanna, the, Congress wanted to basically see a trail go right around all of Camp Ripley and multi-use. Otherwise, Gazalka and Creesha would not put their stamp of approval behind it. They wanna see this be more of an economic impact for the whole area. And, but it seems like things are falling into place, and we're, we're the city that seems to be spearheading it right now and on the leading edge, so it's kinda nice being in the front instead of the back for, for a while. Anyway, just to fill you in, and we'll be holding future meetings here, and Gazalka said he's planning on trying to come to this August 2nd thing, and Ron Creesha said he will be there, and I think it'll be good for our community. So, if anyone wants to speak, I'm more than willing to let you speak that day, too, like the mayor. So if you want a little time on there, it would be nice.
Well, again, Frank, I think, and John will probably even know, too, was it Pilliger or who got funding from Sourcewell?
It was, it was City of Staples.
Oh, Staples did, yeah. Going from Staples to Pilliger, because they wanna, yeah. Two, so you're right, it's, everybody's tagging on now.
There is Upslaw, Royalton, Piers, Crane Metals, possibly thinking of how they can attach to this trail because it could benefit all these communities, and, and Crane Metals especially wants to get more people involved out there and see what they have. So, anyway, it's snowballing, anyway.
That's good. Any other reports? Announcements?
John and I will be going to...
The Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference, Mankato this year. Both the mayor and I have been notified that we are receiving awards, so.
Sweet.
Do you guys ever stay home?
I hate to go shh. What do you do with these awards? You pack your words up on the wall and you sit there and look at all of them? Because you've been getting quite a few lately.
Thank you. Boxes.
That's correct.
Any other?
They get covered up by my son's artwork.
That's good.
That's sad. Where is that?
Nothing else, we will adjourn.